And I call the October, excuse me, the October 1st Planning Board meeting to order. And anybody have any public comment that doesn't have anything to do with what's on the agenda tonight? Nope? Okay. Minutes, Paul?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I recommend approval of the minutes of September 17th, 2024.
No changes to it. Okay. Second?
You want to vote on that?
Yeah, is there a second?
I wasn't here, so I can't vote.
Okay. I guess there are three of us who'll say, well, we're going to.
Three oh.
Yep. Okay.
And that was, for clarity, that was just the minutes of September 10th.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Last week, we did 10.
Very good.
Okay, now, all of the articles are still open for comment. However, tonight is likely to be just the Mr. Cod, considering who's here. And Jed, can you please explain what all of these pieces are in here?
Sure.
And what the coloring means and all of that?
Certainly. So included in your packet in the first sleeve are all of the red lines, original red lines. So it's just an additional copy for you. And those include the Mr. Cod bylaw, the accessory apartments, the use table that would change the accessory apartment use, home-based business, the definition section, which would change the definition of home-based business or home occupation to home-based business, and of course, Article 10. So those are all documents you've seen before. New documents for this evening are this item here with bold blue text. So as I mentioned at the last meeting, what I planned to do and what I've done here is included all of the comments that we've received thus far for the Mr. Cod amendments. And in black is what's shown as the comment. In the bold blue text is staff's response to that comment. So that's for the mixed residential and commercial overlay district.
May I butt in for a minute?
You may.
The first one on the top, this is Donnie Lowe from Kimco, email correspondence, and that's the black.
Correct.
And then it's staff comments in the blue underneath his comments.
Right.
I'll follow it.
Okay.
So then the last item in that sleeve is the same format, no, it's not highlighted, I've just highlighted it for my use, from Bob Mitchell and Bob Ritchie, same format for Article 10, all the comments that have been received thus far, either written or verbal, and their response to those comments. That is the last item in the first sleeve. The second sleeve, which I'll just highlight really quickly so that everyone knows, Attorney Amen has suggested or provided us with red lines of the Mr. Cod bylaw, the amendments themselves, a clean version of that document with all of the edits accepted, and then some additional changes to Article 10. That is in your second sleeve of your book. So the intent for tonight is to, as you've mentioned, to continue to allow public comment on both or all of the zoning articles, which are here for anyone who would like to see them. And then to, if no public comments are provided tonight, if you would like to, get into some of the comments and the responses that we have to those comments. And that way, you can start that conversation so that at the next meeting, which is October 8th, you can close the hearing, provided that there are no more further public comments, and be better prepared for how we might consider, how you might consider amending the amendments to the bylaw.
The page that I have from the two Bobs is not highlighted in yellow.
Correct. I only highlighted my copy for my purpose.
Okay, so that's why I was confused and looking for it.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I have a suggestion.
What?
We don't seem to have many people here. Why don't we just ask which ones we want to talk about, get the public coming on our way, and get the meeting moving?
It's all Mr. Cod.
I mean, I don't know for sure, but...
Yeah, Jenny is too, right?
If it's all Mr. Cod, then...
Yeah, it's all Mr. Cod.
Then we don't have to worry about it.
I don't know whether you remember Jenny Rubisa. She was on the planning board a million years ago.
I do.
Okay.
I sat in front of her many times years ago.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bob?
I honor her. She did a great job.
I have some comments about the non-conforming structures.
We talked about that too, okay.
Okay. So that would be the last there. Okay, so...
Would you like me to walk through the comments?
Yes.
Okay. So on your sheet, again, that black text with the bold blue, that's all the comments we've received for Mr. Cod. I will go through each one, there are 30, so be patient. So the first is a set of comments received by Donnie Lowe, Representative Kimco. He emailed us on September 6th. His first comment is, in the mixed-use development definition, what is meant by commercial accommodations? Does that mean hotel? And as you can see in the bold blue text, I basically just said yes, that's what it's meant to indicate. And just as a clarifying point, the current red line version of the Mr. Cod bylaw prohibits commercial accommodations as a commercial use that would be allowed in a mixed-use development building. And then there's a much larger comment in number two, and it is broken out into four sections. I will just hit upon those four subsections. So it's related to permitting parking on the ground floor of a mixed-use building. And then, so comment A is, is the concern about street-facing parking? I see mechanical maintenance and operations are allowed, which is also an unattractive use. Can we request the language, say that the parking would not be permitted on the street-facing side or and/or unless it was built to be shielded, hidden from the public view, and the design subject to the board's review? And so, you know, my response was very simply, yes, that is the concern, because, you know, what we heard from you folks was you wanted to have commercial uses or residential on the first floor. At the time, the response was, I believe that the board could add a provision to screen the ground floor parking if that were to be allowed at some point. But as you remember, at the last meeting, and we'll see it as we go further into the document, that there's an indication that perhaps maybe deleting that section altogether is better. And that section that I'm referring to is where you have currently outlined what are allowed on the ground floor, what types of uses are allowed on the ground floor, and what are allowed and not allowed on the upper floors. And the preference seemed to be at the last meeting to eliminate that altogether, create more flexibility, but then focus more on the special permit uses in the underlying zoning district, and perhaps put in a use table that says, these special permit uses in the underlying zoning district are allowed in a Mr. Cod application. So rather than specify where things can go in a building, just talk about what's allowed in the mixed-use development building, and just let the market decide how it wants to network.
What section is that in, Jed? What section?
The use table?
That you just talked about.
Yeah, so that's on page three.
Of the same?
Yep, same document.
You correct the one?
Yes. Yep, the bold blue. Yep, this one. So it's comment number seven. And so what I've done is created a use table for you that shows exactly what's currently allowed by special permit in the underlying zoning districts which apply or which the mixed residential and commercial overlay district lays over. So that would be the B1, B2, and BR zoning districts.
But these are all under a special permit only, though?
Currently, yes. Yep.
Okay.
My comment?
Yeah.
At the beginning of that table, we should define what those terms are. We do the same in 6.1, 246.1, agriculture, he says what the N is, what the S is, special permit is. I think that would be helpful to find that at the beginning of the table.
Sure.
Like it's done in 246.1.
Yeah. Yeah, so very quickly, what you're seeing there is, an N indicates that it's not a special permit use, and SPZ indicates that it's special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. So as we talked about at the last meeting, and this is probably a very good part to start off on, is what are some of the special permit uses that you would think would be appropriate to be allowed within the Mr. Cod district?
Yeah, Jim?
I'm looking at the use table, and in multifamily says it's special permit.
Multifamily use, yeah.
This is from Mr. Cod.
Right.
Which we allow multifamily.
Correct.
By right.
Yep. I didn't want to take anything out. I just wanted to show everything that's allowed as a special permit use in your underlying zoning.
Oh, this is the old, this is what's in the old bylaw, what's allowed. But in our, we're not saying that multifamily has to be a special permit under Mr. Cod, are we?
No.
Okay, that's what I was confused about.
What Jed is getting at, as I'm understanding it, is right now, these, everything here, if somebody wanted to put an airport there, they could.
Okay, so this is not what Mr. Cod has, this is the existing things that are underneath?
Correct.
I got it.
Right.
I was a little bit worried.
Yeah. So at the last meeting, you know, we, I threw out some examples, right? So as an example, the first one, adult uses.
You expect us to go through yes, no, yes, no, yes, no?
Right.
I got it, okay.
So it may be helpful for the board to go through each one of these and think about whether or not you'd want to allow that type of use in a mixed-use development building, right? Because that's the intent, is to potentially allow some of these. So as an example, adult uses, is that something that's currently allowed in the B2 district? B2 zoning district, that's currently allowed by a special permit? If you have blanket language that allows for any special permit use, you could end up with an adult use within your Mr. Cod development project. So again, I think it's important that you specify what's allowed and what's not.
And that's why the listing might be a good thing to continue to have.
Correct.
That's the point.
What's an adult use? Strip club?
Yes. Yes. And other things. Yep.
I'm not promoting it, I'm just wondering what it is.
Yep.
Just a quick question, you may be quicker than me, but when you go through them, if you do, which I think is fine, are you talking about they would become as of right within the Mr. Cod?
No.
So it would still require a special permit?
Correct.
Except you're not going to propose to do that to the multifamily, because the whole point of Mr. Cod was to make it, as to residential, was to make it allowed.
Correct.
Okay. And the same for the mixed, well, I mean, what about the commercial, which is allowed now as of right under Mr. Cod?
The commercial accommodations?
No, commercial in general, the retail, all the uses that the plaza has.
Right. Right. So, I mean, in my opinion, that sort of remains the same. But when we talk about adding language that allows for special permit uses, it would be very helpful, I think. And again, it's just an idea for you to consider, because the commercial, the only real commercial component here that I'm seeing, at least, that's obvious, is a commercial or business shopping center.
Right.
So that's currently exist, is a special permit use in all three of those. So the question becomes, is that relevant to add? And I don't think it really is, because you currently allow for non-residential use, be it commercial use, in a mixed-use development project already in the bylaw. So I wouldn't think you would need to include that in the use table.
That's my point, it just makes it muddy. It's already allowed, so you don't want to, thanks.
Yep. And in some ways, this is sort of an exercise, so we can...
Can I suggest we maybe just start with adult uses and walk through it and see how we do?
I think it's a great idea.
I was going to suggest something different. I think most of these are, everybody agrees with most of these here, you know, I only had two. One was adult use, the other one was genetic engineering, I don't know where that came from.
So you agree that multifamily should be special permit then, under the Zoning Board of Appeals, because that's what this says?
All these are Zoning Board of Appeals.
No, so I, I think you would cross off multifamily use.
Z means zoning board, doesn't it?
It does.
Okay. I just hope we're both reading the same page here.
Yep. So as an example, I think funeral home might be a good one, right? So I can imagine or surmise that you would rather not see a funeral home in a mixed-use development building in the Mr. Cod district.
Can we walk through a couple of them as a practice, just to make sure we're all trying to do the same thing?
Yep.
I think that we could back up, we won't make it final, but just go through three, because obviously Paul and I see something different here.
Oh, so do I.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so adult uses.
No.
No? Paul said no. We're going through it one by one. John?
I'm getting confused. Right now, these are allowed in these districts by a special permit. If we say no, does it mean they don't need a special permit anymore?
No, they can't. They're not allowed.
Or they're not allowed in the Mr. Cod bylaw?
Correct.
So these are all just for Mr. Cod bylaw only?
Yes.
Correct.
It doesn't change what's allowed in B1, B2?
Correct.
Correct.
Because that's the underlying zoning.
These are things in the underlying zoning that we could be lifting up. Just for practice, let's do a couple and see how far we get.
Why you put the N down, because the N means not allowed.
Well, we're also looking at what we want to do here with this newer entity that we're putting together.
Right. Right.
So, John, you're agreeing with that?
Okay, but how about B2? Many, Mr. Cod is mostly B2, and now says it's special permit Zoning Board of Appeals. I say no.
No, we're saying no across the board.
Okay, we're saying no across the board. All three things, I was doing one category at a time.
Oh, I didn't think so. We were doing it for Mr. Cod, right?
Yeah, no, you can, I think you can do all three, you know, the real, the exercise really is just...
So it means across the board.
Just the use.
Okay, I'm clear now. Let's do a couple more, see how we get.
Okay, airport, landing strip, or pad?
No.
No? Paul?
Which zone, which area?
We're going across all the three.
It's Mr. Cod's zone only.
Right. And it's for Mr. Cod.
You know.
Okay. Blacksmith, builder, carpenter, mason, plumber, roofer, tinsmith, similar tradesperson's office, workshop, yard, or building. I would say no.
I'd agree with no.
Across the board?
Mr. Cod?
Yeah, just think of it this way, Paul, do you want to see this type of use within a mixed-use development building?
Yeah, no.
Okay. Commercial accommodations?
No.
No? You're with the waffle, Jim.
I think it could be a special permit under the Planning Board, not the Zoning Board of Appeals.
What do you think?
So call that a maybe.
I'm just thinking about it. This is an exercise right now.
Yeah, it is.
It's not a vote, I'm just telling you, that's my thoughts.
I think it should be a planning board issue.
That's what I just said.
Mm-hmm. So we could do it, but make it a planning board issue, not zoning board.
Call it a maybe.
A maybe.
Mm-hmm. Commercial or business shopping center, existing, yes.
Yes. Okay.
Yes for what?
Yes.
Yes for...
Special permit?
No. Oh, you're janking, jerking my chain here, Paul, come on. Conversion of a dwelling unit.
I mean, I don't think it's applicable.
It isn't, not at all.
Well, this is a conversion under the condominium conversion bylaw?
Yeah, it's not applicable.
No.
Again, just wanted to be fully transparent and totally clear.
But it's a good idea to discuss it, so it doesn't...
Docking a commercial passenger or freight vessels.
I suspect the answer's no.
If they can. If the water goes up high enough with warming, we might, but... Funeral home?
No.
No?
Not, no.
Paul?
No.
Motor vehicle repair when not ancillary to motor vehicle sales? No?
No.
Paul?
No.
I didn't hear you, John. No, okay. Motor vehicle service station? No?
No. Okay, I'm done with the exercise. I think we could go officially, make it for real, because I think we're making progress, don't you think?
You're almost done.
We started off as an exercise.
You're almost done.
Okay, then we're going to do it again, or are we just going to, we're going to adopt the exercise?
He's taking notes.
Well, keep in mind, you've got two other members that are not here.
Thought we were just practicing. Good.
Yep.
So they'd have to weigh in too, but, okay.
So service station was a no?
It was a no. Motor vehicle sales or rental with or without ancillary service facilities. I have something I want to throw out here, because I don't want to say absolutely no. It could be, remember how down the street, they're going to have a rental sort of thing that's available for electric vehicles? So if somebody didn't have their, a vehicle, it could be providing...
Okay, let's make it a special permit under the Planning Board.
Do you think so?
Well, just...
Or we can just say no also.
It's a maybe for now.
So it's a maybe?
Maybe, yeah, but there might be a reason, yeah.
Okay. Multifamily use?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, but not in this context. So this multifamily use technically, in those zoning districts, you're capped at a certain number, it's six units per acre. So it's not applicable, it's just like the conversion.
Not applicable to what we're doing here for Mr. Cod.
Yep.
Nursing?
We know that you want...
It's still multifamily, they're not going to say you can't do it.
Still want multifamily, yeah.
Right. Nursing home? No?
No.
Okay.
I'll go along with no.
Okay. Outdoor display or storage of goods and merchandise for sale? Yeah?
That's fine.
That's fine.
I think it's okay.
I think it's okay. It depends upon what kinds of stores might be in the area.
Well, do you want to make it a special permit by the PB, or do you want to just allow it by right?
I'd rather just allow it.
I'd rather just allow it by right. We put enough restrictions on businesses and what they can market outside.
We do. There might come a time, though, when they obstruct a sidewalk or something like that, that we might want to have some input on it.
So again, remember the comment here is to allow for an applicant to pull up, in the overlay district, to pull up some special permit uses and allow them as a special permit through the Planning Board in a Mr. Cod development. So in this case, you're essentially deciding or figuring out which of those uses would be eligible to be pulled up.
I say SP, PB.
Yeah, right.
Okay. You don't want the whole thing to become a parking facility.
I know, but we have shopping centers, you've got to have parking.
You've got to have parking.
I think it...
Is your definition, because again, like I said, you asked...
You're going to come up and say that, I'm sorry.
They can't hear you out in the audience.
I'm sorry. I appreciate your comments, but you're going to come up.
Sorry about that. Peter Freeman again. Parking facility, to me, is not the parking that's required for an allowed use, be it by special permit, which relates obviously to that ground floor business. I mean, a parking facility, to me, connotes, and I don't know if there's a definition in the bylaw, you know, for hire, to the public, here's a parking garage, you can pay and come here, as opposed to, well, you can only park here if you live here or shop here. So I don't mind you saying no to it if it's clear, be it by definition or in whatever you wind up doing, that it doesn't affect what we discussed earlier about the ground floor parking being okay if you eliminate those use restrictions, ground floor parking related to the residences. I mean, so...
This is a problem. How do you see it, Jed?
Well, so in my opinion, it would be completely separate. So it, in the use table, in the business district use table, currently the standard for a parking facility, which is the closest thing we have to a definition, it says, and it says, "In the B3 district, the Board of Appeals may approve a special permit only for parking facilities where a fee is to be charged." And then it goes on to say, you know, something about the Marine District. So the, my understanding of a parking facility is that, just that thing, it's a parking lot in which a fee is charged for you to park your vehicle there. So a kind...
Like ferry parking.
Yes, exactly. Thank you.
How about we go with SP, PB?
Leave it as a maybe for now.
I'd say we go with no.
I can agree with that if everyone...
I'd rather say no.
Okay, I just want to keep this moving.
Right.
I'd agree.
Okay.
That's what you feel? Paul, how do you feel about that?
I'm a little conflicted there, because you have ferry parking, for example, which would necessarily relate to what we're talking about here.
Yeah, but no, we aren't going to have it there. That we're saying no.
Actually, there's a huge, he may have an angle here. There's a huge ferry parking facility across the street from the plaza right now, and it's, but it's only for their customers.
Right.
Correct.
Is that exempt from what we're talking about? They charge a fee.
No, that is a parking facility, allowed by special permit, so they...
So it has to be by PB. It can't be no, or else we were saying the Island Queen can't park there on their own land.
But again, this would just be in a Mr. Cod development project. So the question is, do you want to allow a parking facility as an allowed use?
If they're using Mr. Cod.
Right.
Correct. It does, it gets, it gets complicated.
You have to keep Mr. Cod up here. This is what we're...
But it's parking for a fee. We have parking restrictions in Mr. Cod.
Right. Well, yes, you have parking restrictions, but also parking flexibility. So I think, I think to Attorney Freeman's comment, when you're, when you're seeking, when an applicant is seeking a permit or a site plan review approval for a Mr. Cod mixed-use development project, you have parking requirements for that use, right? So that is completely separate than this parking facility use. This would simply be an open parking facility or lot in which it's gated, there's someone manning the front, and they're collecting money.
Let me put a sign up, park here for the vineyard.
It's essentially a parking ride.
Parking lot.
Yeah.
Bob?
So you're discussing uses to add to or not add to, not allowed to be added to, a Mr. Cod residential development. I think of it somewhat turned around. We know that in the business districts we're talking about, you can have automotive services, you can have fast food restaurant in B2 anyway, you can have these special permit uses. And what I'd like you to think about is whether you'd like to be able to add housing to those uses. It's turning it around. And if somebody builds a gas station, as we, you know, we have examples in town, I'd as we, you know, we have examples of in town, I'd like to encourage that developer to include housing on the site if it works. I've told you about a acre lot in the B two district where somebody's eyeing it for fast food. I'd like that person to consider some housing on that as well. So I'm thinking of it in a little bit different way than you're thinking about it. Um, maybe it would help for all these special permit uses or whichever you allow to add a simple statement that the planning board must make a determination that the special permit use is compatible with, um, multifamily housing. Uh, you know, on, in the particular circumstances. Um, and then leave it to the planning board to reasonably conclude that an airport isn't gonna work.
Exactly what we do if we say it's a special permit by the planning board.
I understand that.
Is there a difference to what I?
You're excluding, uh, uses, and I think you can make it clear that there has to be a determination that in the particular instance, the proposed special permit use, um, won't, uh, uh, have adverse impacts on the housing.
Under the things we do under special permit, is, there's a whole list of things. Isn't that a requirement already?
Well, um.
I get the number, but there's a code number that says that we have to, we have to make a finding that the, all these things.
There is such language for commercial, uh, for, um, multifamily housing that, that use won't be, um, destructive to the business uses in the area, for instance. There, there are three findings for that. And of course, there's a whole list of criteria, um, in the special permit by law about how to make decisions. And you have, planning board has to make a determination or Board of Appeals that, that it's not, that the adverse impacts don't outweigh the benefits. So anyway, I'm suggesting, I mean, but a specific sentence accompanying where you're allowing special permits in the Mr. Cod by law that requires that determination specifically worded to be consistent with the per, Mr. Cod, combined with the fact that these are special permit uses. So what you're doing is, is prohibiting certain special permit uses that can be allowed in the district from having housing associated with it.
Good point.
I, I think for clarity's sake, that's not entirely accurate. The, the, the statement is that, and it should be clarified, that you're not allowing residential uses at the density as proposed.
That's certainly true.
Yes. So currently multifamily use allows you to go up to six units per acre. And with your multiple use clause in the bylaw, you can currently do that as an applicant or a property owner. It's just you can't go up to twenty units per acre.
Well, but you certainly can on a, on a vacant lot in any of these districts do a Mr. Cod project, um, with that density. Again, I think we may, um, you know, want to have both the special permit use and, and housing uh, rather than just the special permit use. And you've got the planning board's special permit process to, as a safeguard.
How would this work, Jim, though? Because all of these are zoning board right now. And we're looking at a particular piece of property that we're saying, no, no, no. We have to claw that special permit back to the planning board.
That's exactly what we're doing.
Yeah.
Is it?
Yeah, I thought that's what we were doing.
Right.
I thought we're taking the, changing the Z to a PB. I might be mistaken, but that's what I thought we were doing here.
So far, yes, it, only in a Mr. Cod application. Yes, yes.
Underlying zoning, we're not touching.
Correct. Not touching it. So the only one that's a little complicated is the motor vehicle sales or rental with or without ancillary service facilities, because as you can see, that's currently prohibited in the BR district. So there's things to consider here on whether or not you want to now allow a use that was previously prohibited in the BR district. So again, it's complicated, which is why, you know, I don't want to belabor the point, but this is why I was suggesting that you just stick with the by right uses, because it's a lot easier to understand. Um, but I think you're almost through the list. So you're getting to a point where you can thin it down to, you've maybe got a handful of uses that you'd be comfortable allowing. And I hear about, I hear Attorney Omen's point. I do.
Yep.
But you already have that ability currently, being a property owner in those business districts.
But they just can't use Mr. Cod.
They can't use the twenty units per acre.
Okay.
They can use six units per acre.
I, I think for flexibility's sake that we change it to the PB and trust our future board members or ourselves to make the right decision on these issues.
In the Mr. Cod?
In the Mr. Cod.
But they could also use the zoning that's currently in place, even if it were eligible for Mr. Cod. No.
So that's not even on the table.
And that would be the zoning board. Okay. Private club, not conducted for profit.
I myself would like to see it be housing and not a private club.
Right. John, how do you feel about that one?
Is there an example of a private club?
Not club.
Yeah.
Men's club. Tom Heights Men's Club. They don't have a clubhouse, but there's plenty of clubs around town where they could do it. And they're in this neighborhood. They might want to do it. There might be a vacant space that's empty and sit there for five years and a bunch of guys, hey, why don't we make this a clubhouse?
Or it could be like the Lions or Rotary or the private clubs.
But only if they use Mr. Cod. It's still allowed under the existing zoning.
You're suggesting a yes or a no?
A no.
For Mr. Cod?
For Mr. Cod. I'm flexible.
I, I would say yes. I don't see any reason not to allow that, but.
Okay.
I may be.
How do you feel?
Changing, I'd leave it.
I'm okay with going, I'm, I'm okay with leaving it. I want to move this along. It's not a big deal.
Okay, recreation centers, including theaters, motion picture shows, bowling alleys, and skating rinks. I'd say nope.
I agree with a no.
Um, hang on, hang on.
What did we decide on parking facility? Was it a yes or a no?
It's a no.
We have a movie theater. It's in Mr. Cod district right now. Pretty big one.
Mm-hmm. Yep, at the mall. Yes.
Now, we're gonna make that a no?
Nope. You just wouldn't be allowing that.
They can't use Mr. Cod, but doesn't mean on the whole parcel? That's a pretty big impact. It is a giant. I believe that parcel's a giant parcel.
Yeah, it could be pre-existing, Jim.
So you can leave it as a maybe. Again, you're not making any final decisions tonight. You're just going through the exercise. That's it.
Okay.
Yeah. Leave it as a maybe? We're gonna return to it.
Leave it in as a maybe.
I need, it needs further thought on my part. I can't embrace.
I would say yes, cause we already have a pre-existing situation here.
I could deal with a yes. I can't deal, I'd, I'd like to think about a no.
Sure. Well, right now, let's do a maybe on it.
Yeah.
Cause we've got two members of the board not here.
I'm okay with it. Yeah, that's, that's good. We gotta keep moving.
R D N A technology, genetic engineering to be employed in production and research. And I was on the board when that was decided upon. Uh, I think it was some, MBL was getting involved in that. They wanted to be out at the research park.
There's two issues there. One is production. I mean, research would be fine. But to start doing production, that's a different issue.
Um, I see the whole thing is no, I don't think this is an appropriate place for it, because we're trying to encourage housing here. So mine would be a no on it.
I wouldn't have a problem with it, saying yes.
Okay.
I don't believe it belongs here. I think there's other places in town. I'd like this to be dedicated for housing. I'd go no, but.
So you and I are no and there yes.
So we'll leave it as a maybe.
Yep.
Makes a maybe.
Yeah, it's fine.
Yep.
Restaurant or.
Think it, production is a very different animal than research.
I agree.
And, you know, if they want to expand and take over a piece of property for research, and it's, it's not production. It's very different.
We're looking at this particular place. We could also look at, at, um, the mall too and say, would it be appropriate in either of these, which are commercial places? So that's my no on that. I don't think it's appropriate in any of the commercial places.
So let's, we got a maybe. Let's keep going.
We got a no. Okay, restaurant or other place for the serving of food, class one, class, oh, excuse me, class two, class three, class four.
Now, we'd imagine, oh, sorry, I, I don't mean to interrupt, but I imagine one of the primary uses that you envisioned in a Mr. Cod mixed-use development building is a restaurant, ground floor restaurant, apartments on top. I mean, again, we've had, we'd need to work through the logistics of how that might operate, but.
What happened to class one in this grouping here?
Class one is allowed.
It's already allowed.
Special permit.
It's not, it's not a special permit. So this is.
These are just special permit uses.
I don't have a problem with the restaurant.
Yeah, I don't either.
I think it should be a special permit. I don't, because there could be discussions about.
I've always been told you never want to live above a restaurant, though, because of the fire potential.
Well, keep in mind that class two's a McDonald's, fast food.
I know, yeah.
Yeah. I mean.
Let's make it a special permit.
Examples all along Main Street of that.
Exactly.
Which, which by now it is a special permit, right?
Correct. Yes.
Just leave it as a special permit.
Yeah.
Restaurant, fast food.
I thought that was a class two. I'm, am I mistaken? Is, isn't it class two?
So, so fast food restaurants are only allowed in town in the B two zoning district as a special.
That is a class two restaurant, isn't it?
That's four.
It's class four? Okay, I'm sorry. I thought. I missed, I don't remember the matrix. It's a very con, it's very, I, I have tried it a few times. Uh, I don't know if any of you other guys have tried to do it.
It's a fun exercise.
So how do you feel about that, fast food restaurant?
I think it. Well, it's a B one, it's a no. And I believe it has to stay B one as a no. And we have B one is under Mr. Cod, so if I believe it has to be a no, then I'd have to say no. Cause I certainly don't want. Or, or, or we make it a special permit only under B two and, uh, BR, but BR, we already said no.
Right. Right.
So it can only be under B two.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's the way I would land on it.
Could be twisted on this one.
Yeah, but again, it's, it's a complicated conversation. I think we'd want to have, um, a thoughtful one anyway.
There's a certain acre land that's been talked about before that I believe has been proposed for a fa, a fast food restaurant that's been sitting vacant for a long, long time.
Yeah.
To correct myself, I was thinking about fast food with drive-through.
Drive-through.
It's always class four.
Okay. All right, good. I was, cause.
Thank you.
Thanks. I, 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 I don't have perfect recall of that, that matrix. In fact, I haven't done it in a few years. It's very complicated.
Okay, so we move on to.
So what are we saying? A no or P, or a special permit by the planning board?
Only under B two, that fast food restaurant is allowed.
Okay, so it's not be across the board then?
Well, and so that's, you know, that's the question in my mind is, um, you know, I see two routes you can. One is less desirable than the other. The first route, which I think is the better one, is to only allow special permit uses in which the underlying, in which they were allowed by special permit in the underlying zoning district. So you're essentially saying anytime there's a Mr. Cod applicant in the B two zoning district, a fast food restaurant is an allowable special permit use to be included in a mixed-use development. Whereas if they're in the B one zoning district and they happen to be in the Mr. Cod, fast food restaurant is not eligible.
That is what I was trying to express. Exactly. Because I don't believe.
In my opinion, the best way to do it.
When we have no setbacks.
Yeah.
And sidewalks and, and buildings built to the edge, that, you know, this is, I, I don't think fast food should be there.
Right. And it, you know, specifically for, for my, my opinion, you created the business redevelopment zoning district. And you specifically said in that zoning district, you did not want to have fast food restaurants. So if you now go and say, well, this overlay district allows fast food restaurants. Exactly.
They shouldn't do that.
Mixed messages.
We shouldn't do that.
Right. And I would not suggest you do that.
I agree with you, Jim.
And Pat, I think you were the only one on this board that was sitting when we did the redevelopment.
Possibly.
I, I believe you were. Cause I think I came in just after it was done. I, I might be wrong. I don't have memory going back that far.
After all these years, my brain gets a little.
Mine is too.
Okay, scientific research. I don't think this is an appropriate place for it.
How do you feel?
I, I don't see a problem with, I mean, we, we want housing and we want business. I don't see that issue.
I don't have a problem with scientific research per se, but previously we talked about genetic engineering. That's under the general term of scientific research in my mind. And I'd be more inclined, particularly since we can't agree on it, take out genetic engineering and leave scientific research in the way it is.
Genetic engineering came about because that was a point in time when it was believed that whatever they might have come up with could escape into the general populace and create horrendous problems. Much like.
Covid.
Covid did.
Well, we can't be specific on every use.
So, but Paul, we're, we're not talking about the previous issue. We're just talking about scientific research.
In general.
In general.
Well, genetic engineering could fall into that category.
But that's why.
We already discussed that, didn't we?
And that was a maybe, so why don't we do scientific research as a maybe as well? Just to.
Just to keep moving. That's a good idea.
Recreation centers, including automated billiard rooms and similar commercial amusement places.
What's the definition of recreation centers? Is this a health club, a recreation center?
I mean, I guess you could claim that it is. It's, uh, I'll look to see if we define it, but I don't think we do.
Well, this is modified, including automated billiard rooms and similar commercial amusement places. So a game room.
Yeah, there's not a definition in the zoning by law for it.
And I would say no on this for Mr. Cod.
I'm okay with that.
No.
How do you feel?
That's okay. Say, say no, it's okay.
Okay. So we got four no?
No.
Stable. Absolutely no.
Need my horse. No, no, no.
How that got in there?
I think the last two speak for themselves. It's television or radio antenna and, and a wind energy system.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, great. So I think.
You have enough information to draft something up?
We do. Yep.
That was a good exercise.
Yep.
Remember, that was only an exercise. We all get to vote again.
With two of our members not here, we can't.
It gives, gives our, our staff some direction.
Right. Okay.
Anybody else?
Jenny, did you have any comments? You got a zip up there.
We could use guidance. This isn't easy.
Oh, I know. Um, and I want to apologize for being so late in making comments. I, I don't follow the planning board anymore. I just get too frustrated, so. But I happened to be sitting at lunch and I turned on YouTube and the last, the September twenty-fourth, I think it was, planning board meeting was on. So I started listening. And, um, so a couple of things bothered me. Um, and actually, this is kind of like a sideways compliment to Mr. Oment, but I learned at the meeting that he was involved in helping to go through this bylaw and whatnot. And, um, he has great knowledge of, um, zoning regulation, especially in Falmouth, because he's represented a good number of people in this town. And I have always said, if there was something I wanted to try to squeak through that was questionable with the zoning regulation, he's the man I'd hire. Um, and I know he's worked in the past with the, the planning board administrators, but my concern was his influence on some of these regulations could be, um, directing the language that in his mind might be benefiting some clients that he may have. And I'm not saying that's, that's what's happened, but that's my concern, is that, you know, if I were an attorney that did zoning regulation, I'd be thinking, okay, well, I have client A who's got this property and, okay, so what would be an easiest way to get that, you know, through the regulation? So that was one of the things that stood out on my mind. And also, the other thing that stood out was having Mr. Freeman here representing Kimco and having gone through the experience of the Saxon development. Um, his comments about, um, having the fifty-foot height would be very important for his client. And I'm like, okay, here we go again with a four-story building. Now it's going to be in the center of town. I just drove through, um, I haven't been down Cape in a while, and I was driving, driving down twenty-eight in Yarmouth, seeing all these big structures on twenty-eights. I'm sure they've been, Yarmouth needs some revitalization, but I just thought, is this what we're gonna end up with? And having been one of the few people born and raised here, um, and what I've seen the town turn into and what's happening, I know we need affordable housing. But the only real affordable housing I've seen has been, been, been built by the Falmouth Housing Trust or the Habitat for Humanity, because the rents that are going to be charged in these kind of developments, this mixed-use type high-end, um, I don't think is really going to benefit the people that we're really trying to target, just as the Saxon one isn't as well. And the concern about, um, the under, I don't know, what do you call it? Underbuilding parking, um, I don't understand, the, the zoning regulation, the Mr. Cod regulation, one of its, uh, well, the first, um, section of the bylaw in, um, what is it? The purpose section says, "To enable the creation of livable, walkable neighborhoods to mitigate traffic congestion by promoting housing proximate to compatible commercial uses, bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure and public transportation." So by saying we're gonna have parking under a building is automatically inviting more cars to the housing area. Um, so it doesn't mitigate anything really. Um, so that was a, a concern I had. And just listening, I have a question. Um, how would, um, the commercial, I, I heard commercial accommodations apply to Mr. Cod. So are we saying that if somebody has a piece of property and they want to come under Mr. Cod, that they can put commercial accommodations there? Is that what was being said? Because that also defeats the purpose of Mr. Cod, even with a special permit.
With Mr. Cod, we were saying no at this point, but that is the underlying zoning where most.
Right.
Cods would be put. So in that case, if they went by the underlo, underlying zoning, they could.
Well, would they still, with the underlying zoning, what would be the number of room restrictions? Or is there, like with a residential, it's six, you know, six units per acre and twenty with Mr. Cod, but what would a commercial accommodation?
Jim, could you answer that?
Yeah.
I know where I'm headed, but I don't know if I'm legally right on that.
Right, so, so.
Just curious.
Technically, yes. The conversation that just happened related to the use table, um, commercial accommodations was set aside as a maybe. Uh, special. commercial accommodations was set aside as a maybe, special permit use that could be included in a Mr. Cod application. So it's complicated, but the lot, minimum lot size section of the bylaw specifically talks about what and how many commercial accommodation units you can have based on the size of your lot.
Now, are you talking about Mr. Cod or the underlining, underlying?
Underlying.
Okay.
So commercial accommodations and the number of units are controlled by your lot size.
Okay.
Allowing them in the Mr. Cod application or as a mixed use component creates a scenario, in my opinion, where you're counting the lot twice. You're saying at this point, we're counting it for the number of commercial accommodation units that I can have, me as a property owner. And then, once I have that number, I set that aside and then I count it again for the number of residential units. So that, and there, I see an issue because, and like we talked about before, it's just a topic that town meeting didn't discuss because it's an important one. You can essentially create double lima density in some cases than was originally thought of when you're talking about twenty units per acre or twenty units per forty thousand square feet. Because now you're able to count the lot a second time and create more, let's just call them, you know, commercial accommodation units, for lack of a better term. So it's complicated and I wouldn't suggest you do it because it does, in my opinion, overdo what you would normally anticipate on a lot.
Jenny, you may remember, I think at the point you were on the board, we were also discussing how difficult doing overlying zoning, having all these underlying districts.
Right.
Became very difficult to deal with.
Well, I guess I just, I just meant that if allowing a commercial, even in a portion of a Mr. Cod, to me, that sort of defeated the purpose of Mr. Cod, to create affordable housing. So that, that's why I was questioning, why would you even want that?
May I summarize your first two comments? One is beware of special interests, I think would be fair to say. And the other one would be that watch the height of the buildings. I think at one point in time I said I, one of the reasons we wanted to keep the buildings not going up to fifty, sixty feet is the wind tunnel effect that you experience with them right up against the road too, that you experience in cities. We didn't want to have that happen here.
Right, exactly. I mean, that's, I, I guess in my mind, I, if I was sitting in your position, I'd also be trying to envision what I would like to see there ideally for a mixed use. Something that's attractive, something that's practical, not something that's, and, and I always get a little aggravated when I hear developers say, well, it's not financially feasible. Then don't do it, you know, do something else. But I also had one comment too, you mentioned talking about private clubs. You may just want to think about private clubs, depending on the club, may often have activities where they have events. So that would infect, that would affect parking and that kind of thing too, so. But thank you for giving.
Jim wanted to say something.
Just a, a comment. We've been working this for several years.
Yeah.
And I agree, if I was sitting in and just heard about it and jumped in, I'd have the same opinion you have.
Right.
But we've come up with some practical things that we put in the thing that makes our ultimate goal not work. And so we've reached out to some people to come help us. And that's what you see going on. It's, we.
No, I under.
Our first pass was exactly what you said. And everyone said it doesn't work.
Yeah. No, I understand what you're saying.
Make it work or we give up.
Right.
And we, we, our intention is to make it work.
Well, that's why you guys get the big bucks.
No, but we had, we all were at exactly the same spot when we originally did this. And I think if you had seen all the discussions we've had over the last couple of years, you might have evolved a little bit further on that. But we don't totally disagree. I'm just saying it's, it's not black and white the way you just said.
Yeah, well, I mean, I've, I have followed some, but not as detailed as I should have if I was going to jump in. But I just felt I needed to bring up a couple of things. And actually, I didn't, in the beginning, I didn't know what. I would hear the term Mr. Cod and I'm like, what the heck is Mr. Cod? And I finally had to look it up a while ago and I heard some, somebody coming before you, so. But thank you very much and.
Appreciate your comments.
Good luck with it.
Thank you.
We're gonna need it.
Okay, do we want to go back on this because we skipped ahead?
Right, we did. So really quickly, the last two subsection comments by, from Mr. Lowe is, he says, I see that a variance is not possible to permit a prohibited use. And I said, correct, the intent was to provide very clear parameters for the uses as the current bylaw lacks clarity and has presented issues with, with interpretation. So essentially, and we should clarify this because there's been some discussion about the variance section in your previous meetings that was included as a red line. But currently, the thinking, at least my interpretation of the board's stance is that that section just simply be eliminated altogether to basically spell out clearly what's allowed and what's not allowed, how they would do it, and not allow any sort of variance from that. But again, you know, it's worth talking about perhaps at the next meeting.
Well, I, well, hang on. We're talking about special permits. We really haven't been, I don't, we don't do variances.
Correct.
So I'm just wondering where this language is coming, all of a sudden we're talking about variances. I haven't even thought about a variance.
Right. So it was, it was a minor topic that we discussed at a previous meeting because it, it was a red line suggestion which we brought forward and it's included in the, in the article as, at present. But there was some confusion and some opposition to that ability. And so the current stance is, let's just remove it, right? We don't need it. Essentially, all of your dimensional requirements can be granted if, granted through a special permit to allow exceeding of those items with the exception of building height. So currently, you've got a section in here that stipulates, you know, what your building height would be allowed for certain sizes of lots. That's the one item that you would essentially not allow for a special permit to exceed the, the building height.
So we're saying we, we, we will be giving a special permit for higher buildings?
No.
So we're gonna, we're locking in a thirty five period and that's it?
No. So you're locking at thirty five and then for parcels that are two acres or more, you lock in at forty.
Okay.
And then for parcels that are five acres or more, you're locked in at fifty.
Okay.
Pre-existing situations, those are different.
Different.
But new developments, you're essentially saying, no, these are the building heights that we want to keep. Lot coverage is the same thing. You specified that for, currently, for a parcel that's twenty thousand square feet or less, you would allow for up to ninety percent lot coverage. For a parcel of twenty thousand square feet or more, you would allow up to seventy percent lot coverage. But then you also have language in there that says if an applicant would like to exceed the lot coverage, they have the ability to do so through a special permit that would be granted by the planning board. So there's some flexibility built into there with some rules. But the only one so far that we have, that what I've heard is the building height is one that's extremely sensitive and you want to hold people to that.
Whose idea was this week codification?
So we've gone through the first page of comments. I'm going to jump to some, maybe some of the more important ones, right? So, and we can go through each one of these individually at the next meeting.
Can I ask a question first? Maybe you know the answer, maybe you don't. There's currently two buildings being built on Main Street, apartment buildings.
Yes.
You know what the height of those structures are?
Fifty feet, I believe.
Fifty feet. And did we allow that?
You did not.
Forty B.
That was a comprehensive permit.
They blew through our zoning.
Oh, so comprehensive permit there.
They can do it. No, they can't anymore.
Also, if we restrict everything, it'll happen anyway.
Fifty six.
Oh, I stand corrected. Fifty six.
If we restrict things, it may happen anyway, out of our control?
Correct. Correct, because there always is the forty B process. But keep in mind, as everyone's aware, the zoning board of appeals is aware as well, we are approaching or have approached our ten percent. So there's a little bit more control that the town currently has. And there isn't, you know, an outright waiver process for building heights of that nature.
That ten percent is not permanent.
Correct.
And the state could change that at a minute's notice.
Not even that. We build more for-profit homes. It changes the equation, ten percent to nine and a half percent or nine percent.
It's a mathematical equation.
Not to ten percent anymore. It's a moving target.
It's fluid.
It's not fixed in time.
So let me just jump to perhaps one of Attorney Rament's comments, which I think was, was, you know, a good one. Not to say that there were any bad ones. It was in relation to the wording of the delineation of the district. So again, this was just original language that was proposed back in two thousand and twenty one where it says, there is hereby established a mixed residential and commercial overlay district. So it's really just to clean that up, to not reestablish it with a zoning article for this town meeting. But to simply say, there is a mixed residential, right? To sort of just clean up some of that language to make it more understandable. So noted, excellent. So I think another comment, it relates to split zone lots. So Melinda and I went through the properties together today and the question becomes, how do you deal with a split zone lot? There are currently thirty two properties in the Mr. Cod district, so there are a total of two hundred and twenty eight properties, thirty two of which are split zoned. So the language that I'm proposing, that you consider, would be something to the effect of, in the circumstance where the mixed residential and commercial overlay district overlays a lot that is split zoned, then the entire lot shall be eligible for the provisions of this overlay district. So simply to say, where it's split zoned, allow for the entire lot to be considered when you're considering a Mr. Cod application.
This is quite different from what we've done before. If you had density, it all had to come to the front with business.
Right. Right, so that you're able to calculate the density.
But the uses had to be on the right zoning and now we're saying it's all the same.
Right, you can just have it over the whole thing. And we can walk through, at the next hearing, what we can do is we can walk through the map and show you individual properties. You'll see that in some circumstances, the split zone is like literally the back ten feet of the property. So I mean, in those circumstances, it's, you know, negligible in my opinion. But there are some that are right down the middle. And so it's an important decision that the board would want to make about, what does that mean? Does that mean all twenty units per forty thousand can fit on the entire lot? Or do you want to confine it to the area in which the overlay rides over the underlying zoning district?
We'll do that next time.
Yes, next time. I want to quickly go through some of these things.
You haven't been citing where you are, so I'm.
Sorry, this is page four. So I'm on comment, for example, comment number nine. So the comment is, the descriptor consumer facing is new and not defined. And the term total building height as opposed to building height is new and not defined. Excellent point. So we've included a definition for consumer facing. This will be in your brand new red lines to consider at the next meeting. And in the section where we reference total building height, we simply remove total and just say building height.
And that's defined exclusive of different things on top of the roof, like antennas and.
Correct.
Building heights measured to the ridge line. Anything beyond that, equip, equipment, antennas, other, that's never been part of building height.
Yeah, and there's specific language included in your, in your dimensional sections which make that clear. And that it makes it clear in every situation, not just the thirty five foot situation, but thirty five, forty and fifty feet. At no point will you include things like the parapet, the mechanicals, all those other things.
Mezzanes, widow's locks, roof decks. It's specific to construction methodology of the ridge, right?
Right.
You agree? You, you know what the ridge is in a roof, right?
Yes, I do.
I'm sure everybody else does, but that's a, it's a set definition of.
So there was, there was, you know, a comment related to, and I think we've already covered it, a comment related to on page five, number thirteen, apologize, allowing commercial accommodations with the twenty units per acre residential allowance. You know, again, I think it's just important to articulate one more time that those are two different things. And, and the way that they calculate the density on the lot is something that, in my opinion, you should keep separate. Just trying to grab some good ones here. So page six, comment number fifteen. I'll just read the comment for the, for the record. At the end of the first paragraph of section two forty seven point five G three B for, and in quotes, except where abutting a non-residential use, I would substitute for a sideline that abuts an existing residential use in quotes. This makes it clear that the increased setback due to the increased building height only applies to the sideline abutting a residential use, not all of the property setbacks for a lot that abuts a residential use. So essentially, where you're increasing the building height, your current language says, anytime you're increasing it, you also need to increase that setback so that you're not creating a very tall structure right next to perhaps a much shorter structure and creating that shadow effect, et cetera. This comment is related to when you increase that setback, it should only be setback from a property line that has a current residential use. So trying to think of an example off the top of my head, but where there's a commercial use next door, the question is, if you're increasing the building height, does it matter the proximity to the next door commercial use?
Alma Road, for instance.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. So I agree. I think that you should have the distance from a much shorter residential use to not overburden that residential use. But I don't think it's necessary to create that setback in the same way from a commercial use next door. You follow what I'm saying?
Yes.
So the language that I've proposed here essentially agrees with that and proposes to add in that, that new language, which.
Could you, for an example, walk us through what the setback would be on Davis Straits as it opposed, as it abuts Alma Road? What, what are we saying the setback is going to be and the height? I'd like to be specific on that, so I could, that's a, to me, that's a very clear reference that I, I will understand.
Sure. So the current language, because that parcel is five acres or greater, the building height would be allowed to be up to fifty feet. And so it says, and I'll just read it for the record, provided that for every foot increase above thirty five, all minimum setbacks as provided in that section are increased by two feet. So.
So we are addressing it.
Correct.
Okay. It's possible, but it's under certain conditions.
It would be fifteen feet over the thirty five and every foot increase, so it's thirty feet. So now your setback from Alma Road or those properties would have to be thirty feet away. If the building were to go up to fifty.
So they could tier it back and tier it.
Or just push the building away from it. Create the parking on that side.
Have a specific example to focus on.
But again, it would only be to that residential use and not the adjacent commercial use.
Right.
Jed, in, in that example, the Falmouth Plaza, there's multiple lots there. There's four or five lots. It's not just one large parcel.
Correct.
So this would pertain to only, if that lot had five acres.
Yes.
Not the five parcels combined. Each one would be dealt with separately.
Correct.
Depending on the size of their lot.
Correct.
Okay.
But the developers could combine them if they wanted to.
They could.
Well, they could buy everybody out and merge it into one lot.
Yep.
It would have to be one lot.
Yes. Have to be a parcel over five acres.
I just wanted to check the calculation on that setback. So if, in the Kimco case, it abuts the Alma Road residences. So in that case, the required setback is twenty feet, right? Assuming it's a thirty five foot building.
Think it would be ten. No, you're right, because it's a commercial prop, that's a good question.
So I think it's twenty.
Twenty.
And, and then for, if it's a fifty foot building, it's fifteen feet higher, so wouldn't that require two feet times fifteen, which is thirty feet? And it's an increase of thirty feet from the twenty foot setback, if I understand it correctly. And I think it's awfully important that.
Are you saying it's fifty feet or goes to thirty?
I believe, you know, and I could be wrong. I believe the setback of a commercial building from a residential lot is twenty feet.
That's correct. However. However...
However, because it's a lot exceeding five acres, the building can be fifty feet high. If the building is fifty feet high, it's fifteen feet higher than thirty-five feet. And I believe, if I understand it correctly, that for every foot of additional height over the thirty-five feet, the setback has to be increased by two feet. So I believe the increase will be thirty feet. That thirty feet would be added to the twenty feet for a fifty-foot setback required. I think there's a lot of problems with that for that particular development, Mr. Freeman can speak to perhaps, but I wanted to make sure you're aware of that, and if, if the figures were wrong that Jed had, I wanted you to know them.
Know that. Attorney, I meant it's correct.
So the setback, if they were to go into that, it's going to go from twenty to fifty?
If they went up to a building height of fifty feet, yes. Yes. So currently, let's just clarify, in your setback section in the Mr. Cod district, it says, and I quote, "Side yard and backyard setbacks shall be no less than ten feet, except where a project abuts a residential use. In such case, only that setback which abuts the residential use shall be twenty feet." So that's where you start, twenty feet. Then, doing the calculation of, if you went up to a fifty-foot building, every increase above thirty-five, which is fifteen feet, creates a two-foot sep- a two-foot additional setback for every one foot. So that's fifteen times two, thirty feet, plus the twenty, creates a fifty-foot side yard setback from a residential use. Now, which I think is very important, in the case that we're describing, it clearly says, "Except when a project abuts a residential use." And the question then becomes, is a full residential building a commercial project? I don't think it is, I think that's a residential project. So I hear it, I'd want to think on that and make sure that I understand it correctly and, and I'm interpreting this, but it's a good point. It's a good point to be aware of that the setback could be much larger than we anticipated.
One other question in, in that scenario, let's say it had to be a fifty-foot setback, is parking allowed in a fifty-foot setback?
There's nothing in your parking regulations in the Mr. Cod district that prohibits it.
It wouldn't deny it, just, you can have, you cannot have another structure in that fifty feet.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
The setback for the parking, right, I only remember a five-foot setback for parking from a property line, would that still be in place?
Yes, that's a special permit, yep. So if you're within five feet of a property...
If a developer was doing that and they were, well, we really only have, Alma Road's really the only one that comes to mind when I think about this, there's probably others, but that's where they'd have to put their parking.
Well, that's one, that one particular development, but I have other little parcels.
I know, I'm just trying to think it through, because that one's clear in my mind.
Yeah, and I think the question would be, would that be applicable? Because one thing that you're making clear in the Mr. Cod bylaw is that the rules within Mr. Cod govern, and there's nothing in the Mr. Cod bylaw that says, if you're within five feet of a property line, you need a special permit. So I, another homework assignment to think of.
So what, did you just say that Mr. Cod isn't addressing the setback for parking? Is that what I just heard you say?
Yeah, it does not specify what your setbacks would be for, for your parking lots. It doesn't specify that.
Because that would kill the, any chance of anything working on Davis Straits.
What I'm saying is that it doesn't prohibit it, meaning like, there isn't language that says you can't have parking within a setback.
So you're saying they could have parking?
Currently, that's my interpretation.
Oh, because it isn't prohibited, then it would be allowed, is that what you're saying?
Right, because, because we've added language to the Mr. Cod bylaw to say, the rules within this bylaw govern, meaning nothing else is applicable. If you're in the Mr. Cod district, you're only subject to these, to these rules that are written within the bylaws.
I wouldn't mind a five-foot setback.
That's what I was going to say, why don't we just say...
Add that in?
Yeah, yeah, add it in, because that's what they'd have, if we weren't doing Mr. Cod, so we're really not changing anything on it.
And then you're consistent with the rest of the, rest of the town.
That's where I was going with this, that's exactly where I was going with this.
The other part of that fifty-foot setback could be used for parking, the other forty-five feet.
Jenny wants to speak.
Depending on how it configures, but it's possible. Jenny? She needs to identify herself, please.
Oh, I guess you didn't, you didn't say who you were.
Oh, I, oh, I didn't, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Virginia Rubisa, Sandwich Road. I feel like I should speak for the people that live on Alma Road, because having just gone through this with the other development on Sandwich Road, I can't imagine people that have lived on Alma Road and those houses for a long time, suddenly seeing, you know, a fifty-story, I mean fifty-story, fifty-foot building on top of them, and so...
There's a fifty-foot setback, that's not going to be on top of it, we're changing the setback.
But it sounded like now you're going to put parking there.
But parking's allowed already.
But the issue, and I hate to keep going back to this other development, but the thing was, people were concerned, there was parking on the sides of those buildings, and people were concerned about lighting and, you know, reflections and all that kind of stuff. So I just, I just feel like I had to say something for that neighborhood, because...
Yeah, parking and lighting now.
Not over there.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Not over there.
Right, I'm sorry.
So anyway, and, and if you're going to start adding, you know, commercial and residential in that area, you know, the height, there's going to be lights from buildings, there's going to be lights from people living in those buildings, you know, these were all the things that I heard from the Sandwich Road development, that the neighbors were concerned about. And so I, I don't see anything wrong with a fifty-foot setback. I would question five feet for parking, but that's just me, and they're not here, but I bet they'd say the same thing.
Okay, let's see. Right, so on page seven, comment number nineteen, and I'll, again, just read it for the record, "I also think that by a special permit, a Mr. Cod project should be allowable on a lot less than ten thousand square feet. The lot would be connected to the sewer and may be plenty large enough for at least four dwelling units. Additional housing under Mr. Cod should be encouraged, not prohibited. These limitations are not consistent with the intent of the Mr. Cod bylaw." So again, my comment was simply, this was the original language of the board, but this was original language that town meeting approved in two thousand and twenty-one. Board could remove that provision if they felt it was necessary, and just for clarity's sake, we did look into how many properties are under ten thousand square feet, so sixty-four properties of the two hundred and twenty-eight Mr. Cod properties are under ten thousand, which would not be eligible for a Mr. Cod project. So, something to consider.
What's the number again?
Sixty-four properties.
Out of, so it's thirty percent?
Whatever that number is.
Hopefully, what's a quick math?
Yeah, right. Sixty-four, yeah, twenty-eight percent.
And that would allow, how many dwelling units on a twelve, ten thousand square foot lot?
Five.
Five, that's what I thought, yeah.
Five, yeah, that's easy.
Five, and it has to be on sewer and...
Yep. Now, again, keep in mind, many of those properties currently have the ability to do six units per acre, but it would be much less, right? Actually, you wouldn't even, you wouldn't even get anything out of that.
Yeah, well, they, they can't, the acre, it doesn't get there.
So it's a, it's a fair point, it's something that the board should consider, but it was original language when it was previously approved, so another homework assignment. Right, so I think this is a really important one. Page seven, comment number twenty-one, it's related to parking and essentially allowing, just for brevity, allowing some more flexibility in the parking requirement, where you're satisfied with strategies that basically would allow for the reduction of parking. So I've made some revisions to that section, and I'm just going to read them for the record. So the section currently reads, and there are three sections here, "Developments must provide a minimum of one parking space per dwelling unit for the residential use, and one space per three hundred square feet of the leasable floor area for non-residential use." That's original language that was approved in twenty-one. Item number two, "Required parking shall be either on the same premises as the activity it serves, or located within three hundred feet of the building entrance on a separate parcel." I believe that was also original language. We had suggested removing that, but it seems like the board is inclined to bring that back in, to allow some flexibility. Additionally, it says, "Parking shall not be separated by a street, having a right-of-way of sixty feet or more. Parking shall be located in the same zoning district allowing the activity it serves." Again, original language.
I, I just have a question, my memory is different, on the three hundred square feet, I, I think that goes down to two hundred square feet for gross retail. And three hundred is regular retail. What that means is there's some stores that just have a little counter up front, it's retail, and the back is all, back of the space is all, almost like warehouse.
Yeah.
And that, so like, like a parts store or anything, so that enables them to have, I believe that, I, I'm only going from memory, I didn't check it tonight, but you, I'm just not sure, I agree with the three hundred being a solid number, I think there may be a two hundred number that I've, I've seen in there before.
I thought it was three hundred.
I, I think if you look at a gross retail, if I find it's two hundred.
It's got to be checked.
Noted.
I've used it.
All right.
And then the last section, which I think is the important one here, is, it says, "An applicant may be granted a reduction in the residential parking requirement, provided that the planning board is satisfied with the proposed mitigating strategies, such as, but not limited to, an applicant providing a shuttle service within a sufficient area, including a car sharing program, or by sharing parking with non-residential uses on the property." So again, it builds in some flexibility for the board to say, "If you include some of these strategies, we'll consider a parking reduction." And I think all of those make sense.
I agree with that.
So that's targeted the development of five forty-five Main Street.
And all others. I, I think, you know, part of the reason, well, I shouldn't say part, most of the reason I'm okay with it is based on the fact that, you know, we just finished our parking study, which says we've got a lot of capacity.
Or gives the flexibility to the planning board to do something.
Right, and that's one of the strategies included in the parking plan, is to say, "Let's use some of these further-away lots that are, you know, shuttle-like environments, where you can just shuttle people back and forth, they don't have to always park downtown." Getting off track.
Okay.
So the, the rest of them, I think, are, you know, I'll, I'll probably end with this last one here on page nine, comment number twenty-two, and it's related to the restriction on the rental periods, and it's really just a clarifying statement to make sure that it's all of the proposed residential units, not just the market rate units, that it would apply to market rate, affordable units, and they would be not a, not available to rent for periods of less than a year, right? To take on that, you know, ability for people to create short-term rentals, so. I think for brevity's sake, that's essentially the, the gist of the comments. You know, I'm fully prepared to go through them in detail at the next meeting, but give you folks, you know, this is the first time you're seeing it, so give you some opportunity to work through them. And, you know, if there's items in here that you're totally opposed to, let me know, but at present, any of the comments that have basically said, "I've addressed it in this way," we've created new red lines for you to consider at the next, at the next meeting, and we can walk through them individually. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, if there are no further questions, Bob, you wanted to have comments on Article Ten, non-conforming uses and...
Oh, by the way, Virginia, we have a opening on our board.
It's actually buzzing around.
I'm sorry.
At the last meeting, I had a few comments about the non-conforming structures, uses in lots article, and I was asked to put them in writing. Despite some personal circumstances, which made it difficult to do it before now, I have prepared it, and I'll just give it to you, I'll email it in the morning to the town planner, along with the case law that I referenced, and they're really the same issues I've talked about earlier. First, that I think the purpose clause is a problem, saying the purpose of this whole bylaw is to discourage the perpetuity of non-conforming uses. In a town like Falmouth, I think that's not what people think. The purpose should be to properly regulate and encourage improvement of those properties. I have a lot of problem, as you know, with the definition of substantial, substantially more detrimental. The three tests that are put in the proposed bylaw are not the tests of substantial detrimentality, they are the test of whether a special permit is needed, that is, whether a pre-existing non-conforming use is protected as it is, or whether the proposed change is no longer permitted. Those are the tests for that, not the test for, once you need a special permit, what's the test? Test is substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conformance, that's the language right out of the statute, it's the so-called Section Six finding. And to put in this different language and say, that's what substantially detrimental means, it becomes circular. It's essentially saying, if you need a special permit, because you're changing a non-conforming use, you, you really can't get it because you're changing a non-conforming use, that's not the law. And as an example, I'm going to send with these comments a copy of a case that I want to, that I'm quite fond of, it's a case that was a two thousand case in Linfield, Massachusetts, but it's similar to situations we've had in Falmouth, like with the casino. We have a very detrimental non-conforming use, the casino had capacity of two thousand people. The conversion of that to a different non-conforming use was a great improvement. In the Linfield case, there was a nightclub, a restaurant, a lot of pavement right up to the street. It was non-conforming in a residential district. The change was to tear that down and build a new non-conforming use, namely twenty-three apartments. They happened to conform to setbacks and lot coverage and so on, but the use was non-conforming. The court held that those clearly were not more substanti- substantially more detrimental than the previous non-conforming use. There's an example of a complete change, something of different nature. Yes, it needed a special permit, but the special permit was appropriately granted. Actually, it was denied, and the court said, "No, you had to grant it." And with the language that's been proposed for defining substantial improvement, it's going to cause problems. I don't think it adds anything, it's just going to cause problems. And the final point I made previously, but have now put in writing, is that we presently have a bylaw that allows the owner of two contiguous legally protected non-conforming lots, undersized lots, to adjust the lot lines, as long as you don't increase the number of lots, and that the area of the lots remains the same or, or conforming. So if you had two small lots next to each other, but you wanted to adjust their layout, you can do that by, by right. So if you had two small lots next to each other, but you wanted to adjust their layout, you can do that by, by right. And what the present bylaw says is that you can't create any more lots. And each lot retains the protected status as a building lot, and it says, no lot shall be made non-conforming. That's the, the language that is a little confusing. It says, no lot shall be made non-conforming, what that is, was saying is that the resulting lots, still non-conforming, because they're undersized, are not made non-conforming by, by being, being created as undersized lots. What is proposed is to take that language and turn it around and say, no non-conforming lot may be created. That's totally inconsistent, incompatible, and doesn't make any sense if the purpose of the bylaw is to allow somebody to adjust non-conforming lots. So an attempt to clarify some language which is a little confusing, I should think about it a bit. The effort to clarify it has resulted in, in the wrong interpretation. So that's all in this letter. I can give you copies of it if you like, or I'll just email it. Do you have a preference? Want a copy?
Sure.
Yeah, email too, if you can, I always like to email, but it, this one. Ted, did you get a copy? We have five.
I did. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I guess we've done what we're going to do tonight on the bylaws.
Yes, ma'am.
We have the letter here from Pam.
Yes.
Okay, where would that go in here, or should I just bring it up now?
It's really just general correspondence, so that everyone's aware.
Okay, you all, I think, have a copy of Pam's resignation, a copy of her letter of resignation, and as you know, she has very mixed feelings, but she felt she had to step down, and I agree, it's gonna be a while before she could come back, so. Have you found out what the process is, Jed?
I have, so, the Select Board's office will be posting the vacancy this week, in fact, it may already be posted today. There'll be an ad in the paper this Friday. And it looks like we're, we're looking at a November fourth joint meeting between the planning board and the Select Board to essentially interview candidates and make a decision. So, the question for the board is, you know, November fourth is not a regular meeting date for you. There is a Select Board meeting, so is that, does that look like an available date for the board to appear at that meeting? Do you have any conflicts currently with that?
That I couldn't tell you.
Now, I plan to send an email to each of you, to just make sure, because obviously we need a full compliment at the board for that. So the one, actually, Charlotte will be back by then, so I don't see an issue with her schedule, but-
Can we get it on the agenda right away? So we don't have to sit through?
Yeah, I, I would suspect they'd put you on first, so that way, you know, they can get on with their regular business.
I would agree to, because we could, we could be put on at the end and go on for two hours.
Well, they could also probably handle it like a special meeting before the meeting.
It could be.
Essentially.
Right, so I've gotta work out the logistics with them.
I'll agree to it once you announce the timing.
Yeah.
Fair, so it sounds like you're available.
As far as I know now.
So, just to clarify this, this is an elected position?
Yes.
Where the replacement is made by a joint decision of the Select Board and the Planning Board?
Yes.
For the time remaining in the incumbents, or does it go longer than that?
No, it actually goes to the, to the next election. So we clarified that with the town clerk, and it will go to, to essentially the next election, which is May.
For a year then, roughly?
Not even a year, till May. Just till May, right?
Way less than a year.
Yep.
Well, May is the election.
Right, so it's a half year, sort of.
I didn't realize it was October today either.
Yeah.
I'm still in summer mode.
Happy Halloween.
Yeah, right. So that's the story.
So she's just there, or whoever's appointed is there until next election, which will be May.
Right, and then they would, if they're interested, they would have to rerun, for their, you know, for her seat, essentially.
Being appointed is a nice little introduction to what we do, and they can decide whether it's something they want to continue doing, too.
But she's an interim appointee, so she can attend the meetings. Or, I keep saying she, I don't know who it's-
He or she, yeah.
He or she.
Yep.
Thank you. It's unfortunate, but a follow-up on that too, is Pam has been involved in a lot of other activities. And for example, she is on the Community Preservation Committee.
Affordable Housing.
Affordable Housing.
Affordable Housing and others, so, I've been asked several times, who is the appointee from the Planning Board for the Community Preservation Fund? And I think it's something we need to put on the agenda and consider that.
Yes, you should, and, so the CPC is aware, I happened to be at their meeting Thursday of last week, and so they were, you know, inquiring, and I just let them know that we had received the letter, and that, you know, they'd be receiving official correspondence. And then I have an email ready to go to the Chair of the Affordable Housing Committee, just to share the word as well. But yes, you will need to add that to your agenda to figure out who is then going to fill her, her shoes.
Well, she's done a very good job on behalf of the Planning Board, so it's hard to see her go.
I think we need to publicly thank Pam for what she has done while she has been on the board here, and so-
I'll miss her.
Yeah.
When she, when she was able to show up, we had very interesting conversations with her, it was great.
Now I can officially become Pam, Charlotte always calls me Pam.
They don't have to be from acting though, right?
No.
Your choice.
So, yes, Pam, if you're watching, thank you.
Yes. I, I've enjoyed, I always, I argue with her, but I always, I enjoyed it.
Absolutely, she was very knowledgeable.
Very knowledgeable.
So, you know, we'll miss that part of you.
An experience, too, I mean, she, she'd been, I think she's been on zoning board, selectmen, planning board, she had a wealth of experience that, uh,
In the other town.
Yeah, but it was still helpful.
Yeah, really, because we all work under the laws of Massachusetts.
We just need her here, that's all, she can't, I don't think she can do it from home is the problem.
That, that became a problem, yeah.
She was very active in a former town in Massachusetts, but I don't remember what that was.
Okay, so the next on the agenda is the Planning Department report.
Yeah, I mean, you've heard it.
I know.
Up to our eyeballs in zoning amendments, so.
And then we have committee reports, anybody have any committee reports?
I do.
Okay.
I've been asked to join the Cape Cod Commission's five-year strategic plan group. And so we had our first meeting this morning, public meeting, public testimony in Barnstable, and then we had a second one this afternoon in Mashpee. We have a third one tomorrow morning in Eastham.
Gosh.
And, uh-
How long is it gonna take before you regret?
I just want the public to know, we're taking testimony right now and comments for a five-year Cape Cod strategic plan. And one of the interesting things that came up earlier today was that they gave a report on housing, and that over the past five years, the average sale price of a home on Cape Cod has doubled in five years. From approximately four hundred and forty thousand dollars to about eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And listings for sale, about a month ago, there were approximately two thousand homes for sale. And currently, there's seven hundred, seven hundred plus. So it's a, it's a real crisis, and, and we're gonna try to help the different communities solve it, but all the other communities are working on the same situation. It's really, not that it isn't solving it, but it's very difficult.
We, we used to have seven hundred listings for sale in Falmouth at one time. It, it is a crisis, I, as a practitioner, when I have a buyer coming in, I said, okay, we'll put you on the list if something comes up, I mean, it really is, uh, and, they're just, it's, e- even if, even though we've gone from forty to eighty, or to a hundred, it still doesn't, the, the price has gone up so high, it just, people are just getting left behind, there's, this idea, I'll wait for something, it ain't happening.
One other, yeah, the thing they said, to buy a home on Cape Cod, the average salary a family has to have is two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
And how many have that?
Just some information, but really, we're looking for public testimony and comments, and-
Are you getting more and more that our people are coming here from elsewhere and buying them as second homes? Because I've been hearing about a number of those.
We didn't get into that.
I can tell you, almost every house I've sold is a second home.
That's what I've been hearing.
Yeah, I'd say ninety percent of the sales I've had, and that's why I make my living, are, are people buying second homes.
Yeah, which means that we're gonna have a lot of vacant homes here.
Well, but there's a pattern to it, too, they start off as second homes, and they fade into it, you know, and they start coming down weekends, and then, then they retire. I mean, it's a, it's a pattern, it's always been there.
Sure.
I mean, most every, I mean, it's always been there, but they, they eventually become year-round homes.
Take twenty years.
It could take twenty years, huh?
Yeah. Okay, Paul, do you have a report at all?
I do not.
Okay.
I went to the meeting, but-
You don't wanna report about it?
I don't have a report. It's getting very complicated, and a lot of the issues with the geo-boundaries and so forth. And to get into it would not be a justice to the work that's being done.
Yeah.
Because it's fairly complicated, but I will give a report after the next meeting.
That next meeting might be kinda long, you might wanna-
Watercolor management, that is what I'm referring to.
I know, you might wanna delay it till the following meeting for the report.
The only other thing is, the two hundred and fifty-eighth Anniversary Committee hasn't had their first meeting, and the second one is tomorrow. So I'm optimistic that we got the right people with the right attitudes and experience, and hopefully we'll come up with something they're gonna be proud of for the semi-kecentennial.
And according to the enterprise, you know, have a full complement of members.
Two hundred and fifty.
No, they used a-
Semi-kecentennial, half of five hundred.
I just wanted to get the wording, that's all, kecentennial?
You want the-
My Latin was a little weak. I was a little weak in the Latin, I'm sorry, I missed that one.
Okay, announcements and future agenda items?
Just quick, the Main Street has the Jazz Stroll this weekend, it starts at five till almost nine, it starts at this end of town, and goes all the way down, and many, many of the places are having entertainment, and it's a, it's a great night, and I'm, I'm having it at the gallery, so I'm participating in it.
Is it Friday or Saturday?
Saturday.
Who sponsors that, is that the villages?
Arts Alive, it's a, a Falmouth Arts Group.
You know, I am so glad that you are aware of these things, and you bring them up at our meetings, too, because a lot of people listen to our meetings.
As long as we don't have people say it's too much traffic and don't go down, and we should avoid it, that's the scary part.
Yeah.
Well, since you're putting in plugs for events, I belong to the crazy quilters of Cape Cod, we're a Falmouth Quilt Guild, and we're having our annual quilt show on Saturday, ten to three, at the Falmouth Recreation Center, we have over ninety quilts. And so, it's free admission, happy to have anybody come by.
I read about that, and it's a wonderful thing.
Is it Friday?
Saturday, I think. You said Saturday, right, yeah. General correspondence, I think that was Pam's letter. And, how about a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye. Good.